You know what? You made me think about mine. Oh, come on. Just work for me tonight, would you? Thank you. Oh, no.
Oh, man, there's a quorum.
Went and ruined it. How's that?
Need me to leave? Is that every time? I can get a business call off if you need me to.
Go with the four I've got. I've got four of them, so I'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Mr. Hall is not here, and to my, to my knowledge, knew that.
I believe he is in Florida.
Mr. Hope? Mr. Murlington? No one's heard from Mr. Murlington? Okay. Not present. Mr. McGrath is on my roll call, but to my knowledge, he's formally resigned, right?
I believe so. That's just an oversight.
Isn't that Browski? Mr. Nixon?
Here.
And Tom Lee is here. But to recognize a planning official, but I haven't had the opportunity to do that before, correct?
You have met Mr. Moore?
I have met Mr. Moore.
So this is Andy Moore, everybody. He's new city planner.
Hello, nice to meet you all.
We'll do him a name tag next time I swear.
Right? Otherwise, I'll just like write it on a piece of cardboard or something. It's gonna be good.
Okay.
We'll do our best to remember.
Next on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, February 1st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Comments or issues with the minutes? Any noticed? Hearing none, all favor of approving the minutes? Please signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Now, next on page one in your packet is the agenda. A motion to approve that agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The additions or anything we need to look at for tonight's agenda or anything we need to change? Is that hearing any? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda? Can you signify with aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Yes. Oh, who gave the first and second? The agenda is approved. Okay, so I'm guessing there may be some public comment today. So this is the time when we are, where citizens wishing to speak out of gender or non-agenda items would be a lot of maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. It's the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like, and let me just add to that. We also have public hearings tonight, so if you do have anything specific with a public hearing, we'll have another opportunity. So with that, if you have any comment, come on up. Not seeing anyone in the room, anyone online that has any public comment.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Please state your name.
Huh? I can't hear a thing.
Oh, Ms. Wolf, we can hear you if you'd like to go ahead with public comment.
Okay.
We can hear you. Go right ahead if you'd like to make a public comment. Is there anybody else online who would like to make a public comment at this time?
Yes, this is Dan Spitzbergen.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, there's a few issues going on in Cedar Springs there regarding multifamily units in R1 zones and also in B2 zones. And that I was listening to the minute or the meeting that the council had in February. And I would like to propose something for everyone to consider. And that is that there has been a rental inspection program in Cedar Springs for, I'm guessing, fifteen years, somewhere in that area. And so the city has a pretty thorough list of all the multifamily units that are existing in Cedar Springs. And it seems it would be wise and prudent on everyone's part to take that list and use it to grandfather in the existing multifamilies that are being currently inspected and maintained by the landlords in town. And possibly give a sixty or ninety day period where any that want to join that have not, for whatever reason, over the course of the last fifteen years and have been undetected, could do it without any disciplinary action. And then after that, I can see where the city might want to take into effect a program that may require properties to upon sale or something like that revert back to an R1 district. Because you've given every effort to grandfather in those who are pre-existing and have been. Most of these that you're talking about have been pre-existing for many, many years. And each one of them is a can of worms that the planning commission and/or the city council are gonna have to deal with if they don't use a grandfather or, or some other program that allows them to continue on. There's also some liability issues on the part of the city in that it could be construed to be a taking if the city reduces the the value of property based on some action that the city took. And I don't know the answer to that. I'm not a lawyer, but it is something that may have to be explored if this continues on. So I just wanted to make those comments, and I hope you'll take them into consideration and possibly discuss it in the future and possibly even discuss it with the council members. Thank you very much.
Any other comments during the public comment period, either in here or online?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Mandy Green, and I am kind of echoing the comments that Dan just made. I have three, three-unit properties, all in the city, of which I received a letter that if I chose to sell any of them, that they basically have to go back to one family. I've been subject to the same inspections over many years. To my knowledge, those houses were converted in the seventies. Would make no sense to convert them back, would hundred percent depreciate their value to make them back into one families, because that would be nearly impossible at this point, because of the way they've been split. I own forty units in the city of Greenville, all in a similar situation, but all of which have been grandfathered in because they were pre-existing units. So I'm just looking for the exact same outcome as Dan is, which is basically grandfathering them in because you're aware of them and allowing other people to purchase them the way they are currently as three units in the city. So that's all I have.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public comments. And we'll move on to item seven, the agenda, conflicts of interest and ex parte communication. If there has been any potential conflicts of interest or ex parte communication amongst members of the planning commission, here's your opportunity to disclose that. Hearing none, we'll move on to the scheduled public hearings. The first public hearing is for special land use for Cavalry, I'm sorry, Assembly of God, fifty-four North Park, Cedar Springs. The applicant seeking a special land use approval for a church. The applicant requires a special land use in a request of special land use approval in that district for a church. Let's, Mr. Womack, can you kind of give us a synopsis of where we're at on that?
Sure. So we have a property at fifty-four North Park, which I understand has previously been used as a church. Most recently, it was used as a senior citizen center. I think it has previously also been used as a health, municipal health center. So applicant is seeking a special land use to convert it from its most recent use, a senior citizen center, into a church. So I did some digging on this, and unfortunately, I did discover some issues, which I think are resolvable, but I don't know if the planning commission would have the authority or ability to make or to approve of the special land use at this hearing, in particular. Let's see here. So under section forty dash one, seven, eight, churches are considered a special land use subject to forty dash five, seven, five, subpart B, which due to the recodification is now thirty-two, six, nine, six, P. Subpart B indicates that churches shall be a minimum site size of two acres, plus an additional fifteen thousand acres, blah, blah, blah. Must have two hundred foot of road frontage, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, just based on looking at the property, I think it's about three or four tenths of an acre. Does not meet the minimum size requirement of two acres. And unfortunately, that's the law I'm kind of stuck with today. So I do have some recommendations. I mean, of course, I'd like to hear the, from the applicant at some point, but my recommendations would be that the planning commission table this request and send it to the city attorney's office. I think there's probably a solution here, but I'd like some direction from the city attorney. Because, you know, as much as I'd like to not follow the law sometimes, this is the law that I have to follow. So if the city attorney wants to give me some direction, says, yes, you can break this law, then I'd be happy to do it.
Before we get too far into it, this new format is confusing to me sometimes as well, but we actually have to have the public hearing portion of it. So I wanted to give an opportunity, now that we know the issue on the table, if there's anyone here today that wants to speak during the public hearing, that they have their opportunity to do so. Or anyone online that wanted to speak during the public hearing.
Hi, Craig Owens, I represent, I'm the applicant, the pastor of Calvary Assembly of God Church. I'm also resident of Cedar Springs at three, five, five Ronald Street and a former member of this planning commission, which in that status, I know the, the burden that is on your plate in trying to make sure that these decisions that you make are harmonious and you're not setting precedent going forward. I just wanted to speak a little bit to what I think our role is in the community. One of the things that I'm very proud of with our church is the way that our congregants have really taken ownership in this community. Frequently, we will get phone calls from our code enforcement officer in the city when there are impending citations because of things that haven't been done at residence house. And often when Mrs. DeGroot investigates that, she'll find out there's an underlying cause, like maybe a health issue or something like that. And so we have stepped in to shovel snow and rake leaves, mow lawns, fix fences, even paint exteriors of homes at times. And so with, with that commitment that we've already demonstrated to being really good neighbors in the community, we intend to bring that to this same property as well. We've identified things that need to be addressed on the exterior and interior of the building, and we already have the interiors underway, the exterior, obviously, the, the weather has kind of been our adversary on doing that. But we, I, I think that, you know, I would echo what, what Mr. Womack said, I, I would be open to having the city attorney weigh in on this. I, I as well see some possibilities, but I think that before you get too far into the deliberations, the city attorney might make it a little bit easier to make that decision instead of some pretty convoluted motions and amendments and that sort of thing. So we would welcome hearing what the, the city attorney has to say on that.
Thank you. The public hearing is still open, so if anyone else would like to speak on this issue, or if anyone online would like to speak on this issue, I want to give you that opportunity to do so. Being none in here, anyone online, well, before we close off the public hearing? Okay.
If I could just add one more thing?
Yes.
So Mr. Owens, I believe everything he has to say. Unfortunately, you know, this is an archaic rule. I suspect that the rule was written such that two acres is generally required for a parking lot. There is a pre-existing parking lot on location. Mr. Owens did do the work and identified the number of parking spaces that would be required. Mr. Owens helped me out. There's twenty-one on site, and they might need eighteen or so. So I, I believe there's sufficient parking, and I believe that that is probably the intention of the ordinance itself. But I'd like to get clarification before they do that. And so, you know, Mr. Owens, I know they're doing work in there. I suspect by the time we have the next meeting, we'll have both the answer in hand, and Mr. Owens will be a month closer to opening. So I don't see this really as a complete roadblock to some issue we have to work through.
Um. Then I will close the public hearing. And also give an opportunity to members of the planning commission, is there anything, any comments you have or anything you'd like to speak on before we move on to the next item?
This time?
Okay, then I guess we will, should I formally table this? Is that what, would it be necessary in order to move on?
Motion would be appropriate.
Okay, so then, would anyone like to give me a motion to table this?
Well, put a motion to table this until we hear from our city attorney in the steps moving forward for the acreage issue.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this until the next meeting, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is tabled for now. Or the issues. Okay, so next on the agenda, this is page seventeen in your packet, by the way, I forgot to mention that, in case you're having trouble finding it. My computer closes.
If you want to just hold on a second. Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Sure. Okay. Okay, page seventeen, this item B is a public hearing for special land use for Robert Rollins, senior, thirty-eight, thirty-nine East Elm Street, the applicant is seeking special land use approval for an already existing three-dwelling multifamily unit. So again, Mr. Womack, if you give me just a synopsis, then I'll open up to the public for the public hearing, and then we can move from there.
Sure. So there's this property at thirty-eight, thirty-nine East Elm Street, and it appears to be a triplex and an empty lot that they use for parking. Under the ordinances, which is forty dash five, seven, seven, it indicates that all of the multifamily homes in the B2 zoning district shall be one or two family dwelling units. It does not say anything about triplex or multifamily. However, subpart three says that there shall be a special approval may be granted for the limited purpose of permitting the continued residential use of an existing dwelling, notwithstanding other provisions of this chapter. So I think the discussion last time from the board was whether that the word notwithstanding would allow a triplex to exist, notwithstanding the portion that says one and two family units only. So I'll leave it to you at that.
Okay, so anything else before I move on to the public?
No, thank you.
This is your opportunity for this public hearing, if you would like to address this, to come on up and do so. If so, please identify yourself and let us know your address if you'd like.
My name is Mark Hoskins. I live at six hundred and nineteen mile Road, Cedar Springs. I'm the realtor involved with this transaction. The seller, Mr. Rolland is here tonight also. Nothing really has changed since we were here last time. One of the things that came to light was when, since he has owned this property, there was a fire in a portion of it. And he got all the permits from the city to rebuild it as a three-family when that happened. So it has been a three-family since about nineteen ninety and before that. Fred McIntyre, correct? Owned it before that, and it was also a, a three-family before that, so that would have been back in the eighties. We don't know at what point, but he had owned it for quite a few years as a three-family. We are looking for, to stay a three-family, to continue on, and if we need a special use permit or grandfathered in, or however you want to describe it and say it in the B2, that is our goal, and that is what we are seeking.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to comment before we move on with this issue? Not hearing any in here, online, is there?
Yes. Yes, this is Dan Spitzbergen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have Mrs. Sue Wolf on speakerphone here. She tried to call in earlier. It was not successful, and I think she has some comments. Sue, can you hear this?
Yep, yep, I, I can, I can hear the, um, I'm hearing this through Dan's cellphone. For some reason, I can't hear the, the meeting itself. It's on my screen. I can see everybody, but I can't hear it, so I don't.
Ms. Wolf, we can hear you. If you would just like to proceed with your public comments, we'll take it right now.
Okay, yes, I would just like to please ask for your consideration in allowing an existing pre-existing use. It should not change based on a name change. I really believe these should be grandfathered in. It's been used, I believe, the owner said, for over twenty years by him, and then several years be, be on that from the previous owner. So I just, for a lot of reasons, primarily for the maintenance of this building to be kept up, so the owners will continue to invest in it and keep it as an asset within the community, and also to provide the much-needed housing. As you know, we have facing a national housing shortage, and, and there's a lot of other reasons, but probably the other people will speak on that. So thank you very much.
Any other comment, part of the public hearing? Then I'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll move on with remainder of the items here for the special land use. So I was curious personally, and Mr. Rolland, maybe you could help me with this. What year was the fire?
Fire was in nineteen ninety-two. My son and I purchased it in nineteen ninety. Back then, it was partially done, so we didn't tore off the back end. Great bill, written, my son.
So, and it was operating as a three bed, a three unit at that point, and then? Thank you, I'm just trying to get my date straight, because I know that some of this has to, regards to when, when do we have records back that the law was in place, or the ordinance was in place? And I want to know what the sequence of events was. Thank you. Um, Ms. Rollmack, so we got a synopsis before. Where, where are we at from your opinion on this? What's left?
So I mean, I think counts, I think the planning commission, well, okay, so let me start this. I understand that this is hot topic with landlords. Obviously, the landlords are here representing their interests. And I, you know, of course, I do this every day. This is what I do. I understand the law backwards and forwards. There is a lot of misinformation, and there's a lot of misunderstanding of what the law says. There's also a misunderstanding of what my role is here. I'm applying the law as it is and as the records are that I have. I have no records that this home was ever given permission to be a triplex back in ninety-two or whatever. I'm simply applying what the law says. The law says triplexes are not specifically permitted as a use in the B2 district. Law does say that a continued residential use of an existing dwelling is permitted, notwithstanding other provisions in this chapter. And that's what this board has to decide, is whether that word notwithstanding would allow the continued use of a triplex in the B2 district. That's the first question you guys have to answer. The second question you have to answer is trying to decide whether this home meets the special land use standards. And, you know, what we're, what we have been doing with the other units that we have found that we have no records of, is we say, hey, we're offering you a special land use if you meet the requirements, so that you are now protected going into the future, which is what the landlords are asking us for us to do today. Currently, under the law, this is only a permissible thing for me to tell the board to do in the B2 and B3 districts, not the R1 district. So subsequently, if you guys decide that that law allows a triplex to continue its use, you then have to start looking at the other issues that exist on this property. Would you like me to go into those?
Sure.
So for any rental property that becomes a rental property, the city has a number of requirements that we would and can legally require of that property to come into compliance with before we would allow it to become a rental. One of which is whether the sidewalks are in good repair. This property seems to have benefited from the city's grant a couple of years ago, and they appear to have all brand-new sidewalks all around. All rentals must have sufficient off-street parking. If there are three rentals on this location, that means that they have to have a minimum of six parking spaces. I drove past there. There appears to be a dirt lot of some kind, which is on a separate piece of property. Uh, I drove past there, there appears to be a dirt lot of some kind, which is on a separate piece of property. Um, and it's not marked in any way to identify it as having six parking spaces. So I, I guess my recommendation or requirement would be that they mark six specific, uh, parking spaces, uh, meeting the minimum size requirements. The parking area, uh, I can't tell if it does, but it does not appear to meet the minimum requirements for a parking area for a residential driveway. Which would either be two inches of asphalt over six inches aggregate, six inches concrete over twelve inches sand base, uh, or I believe eight inches of gravel. The driveway approach, uh, also seems to have some issues, while it is paved. Um, I don't know if it meets the minimum width requirement. Um, and at least on the old picture I have. Uh, it appears to be driving right into a fence, I think that fence has been removed. Um, but I would like the driveway to meet minimum size requirements and of course. If they're going to be required to, uh, do something new with the driveways, I'm sorry, the parking surface. Uh, they may need to outline a, an appropriate driveway, uh, for how the parking would be situated on the lot. So I don't know how the big, big the bedrooms are and of course I understand that they have been subject. Probably, I haven't looked, but probably subject to the city's rental registration and inspection process. Um, but I'd like to know that all the bedrooms meet the IPMC standards for size, egress and other miscellaneous requirements such as fire detectors, smoke detectors. Uh, the IPMC also requires minimum living room sizes, uh, to leave the overcrowding. Um, the city also has minimum size requirements for the different types of rental. Uh, studios must be a minimum of three hundred fifty square feet, one bedrooms have to be six hundred square feet, two bedrooms have to be eight hundred square feet, et cetera. Uh, the city also requires that there be sixty-four square feet of outdoor storage per dwelling. So they would have to have three sixty-four, uh, square foot of area per, um, total. Um, for the outdoor storage of the people living there. There are some, uh, land size requirements that I do not believe this property can meet. Um, now, I, I would, I would guess that the city council would say that non-conformity in the property size is less important than non-conformity of use. And if you're going to allow the use, then I, this is just my guess. But the city council would say that non-conformity of size would be acceptable in this situation. Uh, but we do require that all dwellings have five thousand square feet. Um, per dwelling, so this would have to be fifteen thousand square foot property and it clearly is not. Uh, this property also does not meet the, uh, uh, density requirements, uh, of the district. Is there too many dwelling units per acre? Uh, I don't know if it meets the setback requirements, but we do have set a minimum setback requirements for multifamily dwellings. Um, it's fine with.
Can I stop you for just a moment, I was curious about something. Is, is the density requirement for an R one district or for the B two?
I apologize, did I, did I write R one here?
Yeah.
Well, then I will withdraw that comments until I can double-check the B two district density. But again, I think that's a, um, a non-conforming, uh, size requirement, not a use requirement. And then finally, um, if we're going to allow them to continue to use the on. I'm sorry, the off-street parking, that we should require that they combine the two lots into one. So, uh, of course, this is a lot to talk about. Um, but these are the requirements that the city has for rentals in the city of Cedar Springs. And if we're going to grant a special land use to allow them to continue their property, uh, they should have no objections to upgrading their property to meet these minimum requirements.
So, my, uh, understanding last time. Uh, that we had this, we did a straw pool, which isn't binding, but it was just as signify which direction we were going with this. And, uh, I'll admit it because I was on the losing end of it, uh, that, uh, we had decided as a group that we interpreted. That ordinance at the time as, um. Uh, as, as allowing a triplex in this situation, am I correct on that, the memories of the people that are here at the time?
Yes, but with also with the understanding that the upgrades would be met to get this up to.
Oh, absolutely.
Outdoor storage and a combination of the two lots being.
Absolutely, so. I wanted to, um, start from that point and reiterate and make certain that we were clear on that, that, that we had. That we had interpreted as a group, the ordinance in that way and that we still interpret it that way and there hasn't been any changes of thought since we left. Before I move on with the rest of it, because that's kind of a key point. So if we're in agreement on that, that that's what was decided, again, I was on the opposite side of that, but I was outruled. Um. Now we need to look at, as Mr. Womack said, all these other things on here that we, we would need to meet on. So, um. I guess I would, um, ask the applicant, um, you've heard what Mr. Womack said. Um, does, do you feel confident that you can meet what he's speaking of here or do, is there a conflict?
I can make it a little bit simpler, I mean, there's a lot of rules there and I can unpack it a little bit.
Certainly.
The city's concerned about parking.
Hmm.
You know, if, if there's a rental and he has a parking lot that serves as rental, uh, that parking area should be, um, meet the legal requirements. You gotta have six parking spaces for the three dwellings. Now, I've done the measurements, it looks like it can fit, but right now it's a dirt lot. And frankly, it looks pretty bad. So, you know. At the very minimum, I'd like to see six parking spaces laid out. If you go to other rentals in town, they have parking lines, you know, it show where their people are supposed to park at, this one doesn't. So is there anything that would prevent the applicant from specifically marking? I mean, uh, uh, again, I, I believe the, the parking requirements allow them to continue if this even is a gravel lot. Uh, but then they would have to install perhaps bumper blocks to identify where the, the parking spaces actually are. But I'm also very concerned about that little driveway there. Uh, I believe the minimum size driveway is ten or twelve feet wide, I don't know if it meets that requirement. So we may want to require that they install a new driveway which meets minimum requirements.
So I guess we'll focus on the parking for now, because there were other issues raised, so as far as the parking goes, um, I. I'm confused a little bit as to who's representing whom and who's actually writing the check for this in the end, so. Um, if, if the, if this is on the, the onus of the buyer, if this is on the onus of the seller or where you were at in the process. Um, but we would, you know, we're, we're interested in having the parking comply. So, is that, is that a problem, I guess that's. Okay. I'm sorry? Certainly.
I've owned this property for thirty-two years, it's been more inadequate and, uh, in the thirty-two years I've looked around the city. And I haven't seen anybody with even a parking lot to furnish a, a three, uh, family, uh, unit. This was a three-family unit when I bought it, that's why I bought it, because it was a three-family unit and I have no intentions of changing it. I will keep it, all I want to do is sell it, so all I'm really asking you to do is let me change one thing. My name to whoever buys it, without making all these exceptions. I looked into the bylaws and under a B two, Division Eight, Section thirty-two, three, four, four. Section P, it says nothing about. Cabins or sheds or anything. I don't furnish sheds with my apartments, I rent them cheap enough that the people are more than happy to be there, we always have it full. And that shed was when I lived there to put my lawn mower, my weed whacker and anything I needed to keep clean, anytime, uh. The city of Cedar Springs has asked me to fix anything, I have done it, I've had numeral expect, I mean, a number of inspections. And that goes way back before two thousand and nine. I was okay then, he was okay with me having a three family and I still think I'm okay.
Um, I, just to, just to clarify here, I thought that you were coming to us for a special land use, that we didn't come to you and tell you to change anything.
No, no, I think, I think you want me to change a lot of things, you think you want me to take two lots and make it into one, which wouldn't kill me. But you want me to put up a shed for each. Unit I have, which I don't think I should have to do because in that section I just quoted you, there's nothing in there that says anything about have to have a shed and there's nothing in there. That says I have to change anything in the fact that I've owned it that long.
No, my point was that. This, you, we were, you were not approached by the city before you tried to sell, asking you to change anything.
Nothing.
What the city, you're asking the city to say that we, that you meet all of these requirements so that it is. So that it can be put before the bank in this real estate deal. So for you to get the city to say that, the city requires certain things.
So I have to do all this just to sell it?
The bank is deciding that you need to have the special land use, in, in my impression. Um, I'm going to actually send that to Mr. Womack because I don't know enough about the specifics of the situation. But my interpretation is, is that you are coming to us asking for something. And that we have to apply the laws before we can give that to you.
Okay.
Um, this is not a situation where the city was looking to go and individually punish someone in my, in my, under what I've heard.
Right, but if I can't sell the house, you're punishing me.
We're not part of that transaction.
Oh.
But I don't, I don't want to get into a, a, a head-to-head here in, individually, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding. That we're trying to apply the laws that are in front of us, we're not having a specific thing for you. You came to us with a request and now we're checking to see if it meets that, if it meets what we can get.
Right.
So. I personally would like to work with you. Um, but I, we have to go through the checklist that we have and that was established by, uh, other members of the community. That had sat in these seats and made these ordinances and voted on these ordinances and thought about these for a long time, not just thinking about one specific situation, but. The entirety of the community. So, we are more than happy to work with you, I'm sorry if this feels personal, not trying to make it personal.
Well, you can, you can see how I feel.
Absolutely.
Trying to sell something and not being able to do it because of jumping through all these hoops.
Absolutely.
I've had this property all these years and not once have we had a parking spot dispute, dispute because. They're all one bedrooms, most of the time it's one person living there. If, and if there's or two, we got more than enough room for six vehicles, more than enough, it's a whole lot.
I think one of the issues that we really have to look at is once you're done being the owner, right? That we have to make sure that the new owner would follow the same thing, you've done a great job. With no complaints, but we can't guarantee the new owner won't do that. And so our, our job, I think, is a, is a city planning commission is making sure that the future of the city looks good, that everything is up to snuff.
Okay.
Right, so like I said, I think, Mr. Conley said it perfectly, that we are not out to get anybody.
Okay.
We haven't, we have a responsibility to make sure that the future of our town looks good. And to make sure that the ordinances are upheld, so our continued, our city continues to look good, so, yeah, I, I can understand it's a rock and a hard place, right?
But. Excuse me, but, you know, every, I think if you're going to have a three-family unit, you better have six parking spots, but I don't think you should be required. To mark them off, I don't think you should, if, if you got a great big lot there, they ought to be able to find a place to park a car. And it's been, uh, we've been getting along with it for thirty-two years and I think the people before us got along that way too. We've never had to park on the streets, first of all, you can't park on the streets in Cedar, you know that, in the middle of the night, there's no parking on the streets. Therefore, we've had a lot of people using our parking lot to park because they have no place to park. That's how I know we're the only ones that have a parking lot, but. We haven't a lot, had a lot of success with, uh, you keeping a parking lot for us and letting other people use it either.
So, um. Thank you, I, I, originally I was asking a question about the parking, so it's clear, it's clear that you don't want to.
I don't want anything into the parking, okay.
So that's.
That was a, a thing for the new owner to do, we, we could put that into plans, but I am not going to change a thing to sell that property. I'll keep it and I'll keep it just the way it is.
Mr. Conley, if I could interject for a second.
Certainly, I can, i- is it okay if I let Mr. Rowland sit down?
Yeah.
If, 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 if.
Let me sit down.
Yeah, well, if I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Womack, uh, there's no point, I have a tendency to forget the person standing up there and let them stand up there forever and I didn't want to be impolite about that. Mr. Womack.
So there's two things going on here, there is a real estate transaction going between a buyer and seller. And there is this body, um, which, you know, unfortunately, I'm a rule follower, there are laws in place. Um, and I'm making you guys stick to them and I apologize for that. Um, but we're making sure that the property meets the minimum requirements that are required under the ordinances. I don't care who does them, it could be the buyer, it could be the seller, I just want the property to be updated and look nice and meet these minimum requirements. Now, if the seller wants to meet them, uh, as, you know, part of the transaction, I'm happy for that too. Um, but somebody has to submit plans showing, I'm going to put out six bumper blocks and that's going to delineate the six required parking spaces. Uh, bumper blocks cost what, a hundred bucks maybe a piece? Uh, there are some very cheap ways of doing these things, but they require a little bit of planning. A little bit of writing stuff down on a piece of paper and submitting it to the city to show that they're planning on meeting these minimum requirements. So, I understand real estate transactions, um, for a number of reasons. Um, but, you know, I'm also trying to get these properties updated and meeting the minimum requirements.
So I guess the part that's confusing for me is we're normally dealing with the person who is purchasing slash intending to maintain the property afterwards. Not the person who's selling, so I don't mean to put Mr. Rowland on the spot on, on that, because you're not in the position of the person we normally talk to in this. Um, so I was unclear who, how we're enforcing this special land use. If we were to approve it and who is, who is the, the, the entity that's saying that they're going to agree to it.
Yeah, so normally it, it happens one of two ways, either the seller is attempting to finance the property. And the bank, uh, does a, I guess, an audit check on the, uh, conformity of the property. Um, and we have determined that this property didn't have a special land use in place. And upon further recon, uh, investigation, doesn't beat these minimum requirements. So we, the city would turn to the bank and say, sorry, they don't meet the minimum requirements. And thereafter, the purchaser is not able to get their mortgage for the property, that's how it normally happens. Um, but also, when we become aware that a property doesn't have a special land use. Um, I think we are then obligated to do this type of review. And part of a review and approval of a, of, uh, property to continue to use is that they meet minimum requirements. So it, it kind of would have happened either way in this situation, but you're right, normally we have a seller in here. Saying, yes, when I purchase the property, I will do X, Y, Z, I'm sorry, fire, correct? Sorry.
I think the issue we're stuck on is parking, right?
Yes.
The issue is the lots aren't combined, so the new owner could technically sell that second lot and eliminate a park, and then creating a parking issue, right?
You know, so these are the major issues, is the parking.
Yeah.
Primarily in the driveway.
Yeah, I, I agree in the driveway, I was looking at Google Earth and it looks like the driveway is still, I, I don't have a tape measure, but it looks like it might be smaller than what is required.
Yes.
Go ahead. Brings a couple of questions to my mind from the discussion previous. One. Due to, we, we believed that we had to come for special land use. When we're selling. Is there, uh, ordinance or anything stating that?
Mr. Rowmack, can you explain?
Well, it's partially that, once we've identified a property as being, uh, non-conforming or possibly illegal. Uh, we, we're attempting to solve the issue, I know it doesn't feel like that right now. Um, but what happens if. They sell the property, uh, we identify it as an illegal use, as we have in some of these R one properties. Um, and now, uh, the purchaser of the property is attempting to sue the seller of the property. Um, for non, non-disclosure of these non-conformities. So that's part of the reason that we're here, is we're attempting to resolve the issue. Grant the special land use, which functionally is a grandfathering, if you want to call it that. Um, but in exchange for that, instead of just saying, you know what, you've been doing it for thirty-two years and, uh, even though it doesn't meet the minimum requirements, we're not going to require you to. Meet the minimum requirements, I think that's kind of a silly way to run a city, because now your city is always going to look thirty-two years old. Um, I think in exchange for granting a special land use, granting the grandfathering, that it's appropriate that they meet some of these minimums. that it's appropriate that they meet some of these minimum requirements.
So it's not a requirement of the mortgage company? Let's clarify that. It is a requirement then of the city is off when we bring it to you. Now, the mortgage company may say yea or nay whether they'll accept that or not. What would happen if I sold it on a cash basis or a land contract? Does that mean that we would not have to come before the city? Because the bank's not telling us no. Then that is a requirement of the city. They're requiring us to be here in order to sell this property. Because then the bank's not involved. They're not telling us.
My, when this has happened in the past, and I'm gonna let, again, Mr. Womack fill this in because he does this every day and I'm just here for occasionally. When we've had this in the past, the impetus has been, the seller wants to sell, but the buyer can't buy because they need a mortgage and the, the mortgage won't be approved without a special land use. If that's not the case in this situation, certainly, I'm, I'm, you know, that, that's the case. I'm willing to, to acknowledge that. But that's not the reason why we're having the special land use. In my interpretation, the special land use was to, was in order to, codify or to, to clarify for all people coming forward that this is an approved use of the city.
We, we had a cash buyer. If I'd have known that, we could have bypassed the city from what I understand here tonight. But now we have lost our cash buyer because of the city.
So are you admitting that you wouldn't have, uh, pulled the purchase of your property, that it was a non-conforming use of the property?
Nope.
Cuz that's a violation of your prior ethics, I believe.
Correct.
But if they would have known, if we could have, because I told them right up front that we had to come to the city for this meeting. I did not hide anything from them and I, and I never would. So, but I'm, what I'm saying is if we disclose that, that we sell it on a cash sale or a land contract, then we don't even have to have this meeting. They would have to deal with it again down the road if the bank came to them. But their knowledge then, they know that. So this, eh, I'm, I'm confused on where the requirement is, if this is a requirement of the city or upon the, on the, uh, homeowner to bring this to the city for their variance.
Let me, Mr. Womack, ask Mr. Womack a clarifying question on this. So the new, the, the hypothetical buyer, um, if it was a cash purchase, uh, would they require approval from the city before they could rent those properties themselves?
If and when the city became aware, uh, of the property being used potentially illegally, then yes, the city would have requested that they come in and get the special land use um, so that they could continue that use into the future.
So in the hypothetical situation that you're setting up, um, as long as you told that person that they weren't conforming and that they were supposed to talk to the city to get approval and you put the onus on to them, it seems to me that that would
We don't need an approval if it's a cash sale from what you were saying.
No, they would need an approval to continue operating it as a business. If they were aware of the fact that they needed that approval.
And this is a requirement that we're standing here tonight.
You're, you're here tonight to make it so that that special land use is already there. If you had created a separate situation where you sold it to them and said the onus is on you to get the special land use, then I know, am I wrong? Then he could have done that, right?
Yeah.
But either way, as long as everyone's informed along the way.
Right.
Um, I'm guessing that if you were to tell a buyer that, uh, you're not legally allowed under the current situation to continue and it's up to them to make it legal, you, it would probably reduce your price.
But they are legal because we have gotten all the inspections done and the city has passed it along for I don't know how many years.
See, that's a misunderstanding.
That's not what they're inspecting. They're ins- well, go ahead.
They're not inspecting that it's a
No. So rental inspections are for the safety of the people living there. Zoning approval is for the use of the property. They're two totally different laws. As far as we're aware, this property has never received zoning approval for its current use, which is what we're trying to correct today through a special land use. But apparently, we're not going, or the current owner of the property doesn't want to do that. Now, if he would like to sell it, um, as an illegal, non-conforming property, uh, he could do that. But we'll just go after the purchasers of the property. That's what we're attempting to do today.
In order to get the grandfathering, which isn't a, which isn't a true term, but it's a colloquial term. In order to get it, you'd have to meet the requirements of a special land use. If you were a new build, you'd have to get the requirements of a special land use. In order to operate in the city, in that location with that type of business, which is what it is, it's a business, you need a special land use. Um, you haven't had one because in the past, the city hasn't required one or sorry, the city did require, but they didn't enforce it in the way that they should have. But if you want the official stamp of approval, there's certain things that have to be done. That's, that's, and, and if we, if we give you the stamp of approval without requiring you to do those things, now we're breaking our, our oaths, we're breaking the ordinances that are there. So it puts us in a, in a very difficult position. And we're willing to try to find, to have a medium where we can still realistically say, hey, we did what we're supposed to do. We did our due diligence. We followed the oath, uh, to, to, that, that we swore when we came up here to do this and make as many people as happy as we possibly can. We're more than willing to find the wiggle room in here. It's just difficult to say, no, we're not gonna do it, but we'll give it to you anyway. It's that, there has to be some negotiation in there.
Mr. Conkret, would you wait until the chairperson calls on you if you'd like to?
So in by the, in the meantime, I've, I've left the show, I'm standing up here. As I said, I, I, I'm polite sometimes. I leave people standing up there while we have
No problem. I have one, couple others, one, another statement and a question. Um, in discussions, it is a gravel driveway. I don't know how deep it is. I don't know. It's been gravel for a long time or gravel, um, parking lot. My other question is, if the city, uh, I don't know how that all worked with the sidewalks. If we have two new sidewalks around there, I would think the approach is wide enough. Because they would have, would they not have, they put sidewalk in.
No, sidewalks would be different.
Different than the curb cup.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And it's also, sorry, it's also entirely possible that when they go out and measure it, that it might meet the minimum size requirements. But just visually looking at it, and I'm not gonna go onto your property and measure for you, uh, it might meet those requirements. But that's kind of what we're talking about today, is they have new sidewalks. So we're not going to require that, right? But the driveway, it looks like it might be less than ten feet. If it is less than ten feet, uh, it's a minimum requirement to ten feet. So they should be required to upgrade that driveway. I mean, makes sense to me. So, but, Mr. Conley, thank you. You articulated that well.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, we've, we've gotten, um, uh, deeper into the situation than I anticipated and, and uh, if, 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 uh, in any way, um, I was not, uh, as charitable as I could have been or would not, or got competed. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to come, get everything clear cuz there's a lot of misunderstanding in the community on a particular issue. And it is a very difficult issue and it's one that we dread every time we have to even touch it. Uh, because we know there's so many feelings every way on this. Um, let's regroup a little bit. So, uh, we have the parking situation, which is in, obviously in flux at the moment. Um, what, uh, as far as the other things that Mr. Womack said, um, the, um, minimum um, size requirements under the city ordinance, that's one thing that I'm curious about.
So, um, our rental inspector, we pay him to make sure that people are not putting, uh, water heaters in children's bedrooms.
Hmm.
To make sure that there's not mold growing, you know, in the walls.
Hmm.
As far as I know, he has not measured the rooms. Uh, cuz that's a significantly, a larger amount of time and cost to the city. Um, so I only put it in there to indicate that we do have these laws and requirements. Um, now, you know, this is kind of one of those, when you walk into a place, you know that doesn't meet the minimum size requirements as we have many times in this community. Um, but, uh, you know, just like the boilerplate language we use for so many things here, um, it's probably appropriate just to say, uh, that they can only use, you know, bedrooms and that meet the minimum IPMC requirements. Uh, just so that later on, uh, during the ne- next rental inspection, when we do pay the rental inspector to measure the rooms, if it doesn't meet those requirements, then can't use that rental anymore.
So under the current inspection program, do they check for things like proper egress windows and, and that kind of thing?
Or They do, yes.
Okay. So cuz on here, you, you mentioned size, egress and miscellaneous requirements. So size, they might not, but egress has already been established. We could, we would hope if they pass the inspection.
Yes. And I apologize, I did give the board a lot more information than you probably needed for this particular situation. But this is kind of the direction the city's headed into, uh, actually holding landlords to these minimum requirements. You guys are gonna see these again and again.
Uh, can I ask a question? So the, the conversation we had last month was definitely about combining the two parcels to make sure that we had adequate parking. Is that a requirement that the parking is on the same parcel as the dwelling?
It is.
Okay. That's what I thought was the issue. I was trying to call from last month and the conversation we had.
It's, I, I believe you said it, Mr. Hoag. What happens when they decide, well, we're gonna sell the parking lot?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what my concern was, is somebody could buy the two lots and suddenly the second lot is another whatever it is, right? Yeah. And then the parking's gone and then we have an issue. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanna have clarification there. And I, one more thing, I guess with the parking thing, this might help you guys too, is, is it a requirement? Uh, what's the, the requirement of the city for that parking lot? You know, obviously, we want our city to look clean and, but we also understand that asphalt is expensive and getting that installed and we wanna be kind enough of the people's expenses
Sure.
to have as landowners. So what's the, what's the absolute requirement for a parking lot? City standard or apartment?
Yep, a residential parking lot has to either be, or a new one, eight inches of gravel or two inches asphalt over some subbase or six inches concrete over some subbase. Now, if they're indicating that it's a pre-existing gravel lot, I'm not gonna go out and measure it. What we don't want is a dirt lot.
Yep.
But it's been under snow. I couldn't tell. Um, so if that is a existing gravel lot, then I don't see any reason why it needs to be changed or upgraded. Apart from the, you know, specifically identifying where six parking spaces are uh, and the driveway to make sure it meets minimum requirements.
That's what I thought too. I just wanted some clarification.
So a, a non-expensive, there, there are several options. I'm assuming it doesn't necessarily have to be a concrete block or a sign or whatever. As long as it, as long as it just signifies that this is a parking spot?
Yep. So, I mean, that's another thing is, the ordinances don't say they have to have a bumper block. There's nowhere in the ordinance that says that. What it does say is they have to identify six parking spaces. And most people do it with painted lines. Now, you can't hardly paint lines on a gravel lot and have it stay, right? Um, so bumper block would be another reasonably cheap alternative that many businesses use. Uh, they can get them for between fifty and a hundred dollars each. So I only recommended that as a possibility. Now, as you guys know, cuz you guys deal with this all the time, uh, applicants normally come to us and tell us, here's how I'm gonna meet the minimum requirements. It is not our jobs to tell them how the, uh, can meet the minimum requirement. But obviously, again, because we do it and they don't, um, sometimes it can be helpful to do that for them.
We wanna be helpful to the people that are in our city living and earning a, a living as well. Um, the other question I had too was about the, the sixty-four square feet outdoor storage space. That's a requirement for all. Yeah, cuz I know a lot of this and is
That's, that's
I mean, when this was purchased, I was fourteen years old. So a lot of it is, you know, we're looking at the new standards and trying to make sure that we're keeping these in conformance with the new standards and even if they weren't followed in the past. That's why, that's why I think Mr. Conley said it's, we're not trying to pick on anybody. We're trying to make sure our city looks great and continues to look great and it continues to transform our downtown space and the living areas around it.
So, Mr. Hoag, you will recall, it wasn't that long ago, I think, the property to the immediate south of this property.
Yeah, the two-story one there, right? Yeah.
Which is what, forty East Elm?
Yep.
Uh, we imposed that requirement on them.
I thought we had to. Yeah.
It's all the new sheds.
Okay.
And that's all the issue.
Yep. Okay. I thought we had as well. Right. And that's a requirement.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, I guess.
Conley, would you like maybe a recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, because it's, 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 yeah, not quite the normal situation that we have here. So I'm not sure exactly how to proceed in this situation.
So, uh, applicant now is aware of what these requirements are.
Hmm.
Um, and, you know, the board seems willing to allow them to continue the use based on the ordinance that we've identified. Um, so maybe you guys want to give a preliminary or even a final approval on that part of it and then identify which specific issues you want to see addressed. Now, you can do it one of two ways. You can either have them submit the information and bring it back to you guys or like we do with many site plans, uh, have them submit the information to City Hall and have it, I, you know, approved of by the city manager or the zoning administrator's office. I can make recommendations about what we'd like to see completed.
So go ahead and do that and then we'll determine as where, where we're comfortable with that because I do feel like we're leaning towards trying to have a solution here, um, as long as we can have a, you know, a, a a reasonable, uh, attempt from, from both sides to, to meet the middle here. So, um, what, what would the city be asking for?
Okay. So I would like to see that the parking area have six identified and or marked parking spaces. Uh, based on what the applicant has indicated today, if it is already a gravel lot, then that would meet the minimum requirements. Um, I'd also like to see the measurement of the driveway, uh, and see that it meets the minimum requirements entering the parking lot. Uh, and if it does not meet those minimum requirements, I would like to see that the driveway be redone to meet the minimum requirements. Uh, I would require that all bedrooms and living rooms meet the minimum IPMC requirements, which of course they probably do, but I don't know. That there be a minimum of sixty-four square feet of outdoor storage available per unit, which could be accomplished by a garage, three sheds, one large shed, however they wanna do it. So long as the people living there have access to storage for whatever outdoor goods they have, like bicycles or lawn mowers. And that the two lots be combined into one lot. That is what the city would request.
Okay. So, um, members of the planning commission, you just heard that. Uh, is there anything you would like to add, subtract?
I think that fits with what our concern was. Yeah.
Okay.
Are you?
I don't even know how to put it in there. What I'm thinking.
Okay.
I, I don't know how to put it in and how to make it work.
Which specific issue are you referring to?
Well, it's, it's another one, but I was thinking for the seller to make sure that the seller checks over the lot, make sure that it, there is enough gravel and everything there so that it looks good.
I mean, it would, it would be nice if they would make the lot look nice and clean up the edges and, you know, give it a brush over and add some gravel cuz it's clearly been depleted through the years. But I don't have legal authority to require that.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
But I think all that sounds good.
Okay. Would you need anything more from us other than a motion, uh, hitting those points?
Um, your motion would have to identify that you're allowing it as a continued residential use, uh, notwithstanding other provisions, which have her as a triplex. The triplex, that's the other.
Guessing none of you are jumping up to try to make this motion for.
You had the pen. I left mine in my jacket.
Yeah.
It's over there and I keep glancing. I hate that and I have some right notes. I couldn't possibly do it. I don't trust.
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to get all the correct verbiage in there.
Cuz I think, Mr. Conley, if you have it written and make the motion.
I don't fully yet, but if you give me a couple more seconds. Oh, he's forgiving you a pen.
Five, seven, seven. He must have left this one last. It looks just like the one in my pocket.
Yeah, uh, so the. Okay. My brain stopped working a little while. Could you give me some boilerplate language on how I would signify that we had interpreted that particular portion to be?
Sure, so a motion to approve of the special land use and zoning permit for thirty-eight, thirty-nine Elm Street, subject to the following conditions. Following conditions.
Well, it's specifically the part with how it meets, how we've determined that it meets that, on that particular, the, the notwithstanding part.
Motion to approve the special land use and zoning permits. And state that it meets the minimum requirements under forty-five, seven, seven. Our E sub part three.
We've determined that it has met that.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, are you comfortable with the language? That is the old standard.
Thirty-two, six, ninety-eight.
More comes in in a.
I'm sorry, thirty-two, six, ninety-nine. E three.
Okay, because I wanted to have that clear, since we're kind of dancing on the head of the pen here legally, in my, in my opinion, maybe not in the other numbers. Um. So, I'll move to approve a zoning permit and special land use for the continued use of thirty-eight and thirty-nine Elm Street properties. It's a three-unit multifamily home, based upon our interpretation of thirty-two, six, nine, nine, E three. With the conditions that there are a minimum of six specifically marked parking spaces. With a, with a parking area that meets the city's minimum requirements, driveway that meets the city's minimum requirements. And that all bedrooms and living areas meet the minimum IPMC requirements. And that both lots be combined into one lot. And that there be the sixty-four square feet per dwelling of outdoor storage provided.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Sixty-five with I?
Aye.
I? All opposed? Okay.
As a housekeeping measure, do you want them to bring evidence of same back to this board?
Oh, yeah.
You want the, to be approved up by the zoning administrator? And you care whether it's completed by the buyer or the seller?
We.
I don't think we care if it's completed by the buyer or the seller.
How they complete it, that's, that's up to the buyer and seller, how they, any potential buyer slash seller, if they, that's just our minimum requirements.
Want this to be verified by the board or by the zoning administrator?
Zoning administrator.
Your opinion?
I think he needs to go back in front of us.
I'm fine with the zoning administrator. If the zoning administrator wants to include me on it, he can. And want to reiterate that we want to be as flexible as possible in meeting those requirements. And we're not trying to make this a onerous thing, but we're trying to just uphold the ordinances as they are, the best of our ability. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda. We had, it's under site plan review. I'm guessing we're not doing a full site plan review on this today.
We're not. I mean, I don't want to. Maybe somebody else might want to do one, but we did receive this just the day I was supposed to make your agenda. It's something we've been working on for quite some time. There are some still outstanding issues that we're going to have to address before you, you know, finalize this project, but they did submit it. And it's been submitted to both the engineer and city planner, who I'm sure are almost complete with their reviews. But this will come back to you at your April meeting. I present it to you for informational purposes only, and I'm open to answering any questions that I can. I don't want to say on behalf of the developer, but from what I understand of the project.
Um, is, now, is anyone online with a developer? I don't know if there's it or here for the developer. I'm guessing not.
I can't see the screen. Is there anybody online who wants to speak on this project?
This is Wally Bukowski, seven-one-one-six, Driftwood Drive. I'm not a resident of Cedar Springs, but I am one of the co-developers. As Mike just mentioned, we're in the initial process. We spent quite a bit of time and money and energy going through the initial phase of, of site. Identification, use, engineering, soil, wetlands, you name it, to get to this point. And now we feel very comfortable that the plan meets all of those requirements, and now we're just following up with the next process, you know, next, you know, step in the process. Mike's been great to work with, very knowledgeable. We appreciate all his time and energy. And we've been working with some other local people, such as the built, the property owner, Dwayne McIntyre. And everything is seeming to be coming, you know, coming along nice, but we're not foolish. We know this is a process, and we appreciate any of your input. You know, our engineers did a full review of all the zoning requirements, but as you guys know quite well by working with Mike, he's very knowledgeable, and I'm sure he will give this a full thorough review, and we'll get feedback hopefully at the next meeting, right, Mike?
Absolutely, and thank you for your lies. I appreciate that.
Now, we work with a lot of municipalities, and that's very truthful. You guys do a good job. I wish a lot of other people could learn from you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had a question about the location, and I might, it might be in the site plans. I didn't dig into them very deeply. Or maybe some indication of this, but the location of any potential extension of Cherry Street relative to this property.
Yep, so there is no current plans, as far as I'm aware, for the extension of Cherry Street. The city has worked on developing easements and right-of-ways through that area. Unfortunately, it's understanding that the county believes that the right-of-way is extending off of White Creek would be county right-of-way. Which does not incentivize the city in taking over or putting the effort and costs onto the city to develop those rights away. And there is also some discussion with developers about whether the road, which would be installed as part of their project, would be private road or a public road. Which obviously changes a number of things, so. Nothing from the east side, but it does appear that from the west side of White, White Creek extending eastwards, that there will be some kind of road installed there as part of this project.
Okay, but, um, is anything, I guess maybe I should rephrase the question. Is anything that we have before us right now making it impossible to have a Cherry Street extension in the future?
I don't believe so.
And was I correct in reading this? This is to the east of White Creek, so next to the hotel?
Correct, so this would be the property to the immediate north of the hotel.
Okay, because I was thinking it was on the other side, but then I had to go back and reread it again.
It's kind of an L-shaped property, so it does extend north and to the east of the hotel.
Well, I was thinking next to Save-A-Lot, and so that, that's where I kept getting confused.
We had talked about the, that piece of property previously, not this project.
The other preliminary thoughts or opinions or questions that any other members of the commission have? It'll be a big haul.
I'm sure that Mr. Moore appreciates his first project with the city being this large.
That's what, that's all we do around here, is big stuff, really, honestly.
There's a reason I kept delaying the project for months and years so that we could have Mr.
It's just a bustling metropolis. If you didn't notice me, you're open.
I appreciate the lot of confidence. We like people to drink from the fire hose, so, open up.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else to address on that, then we'll move on to other business. Item ten A, a proposed pool ordinance.
So, you guys are going to love this. This is the section where I get to say, hey, we're going to work on this some more and bring it back to you when it's more complete. The proposed pool ordinance, this kind of goes hand in hand with your fence ordinance, which you guys finish in what, two, three weeks? Is that how much time we spent on that? The current pool ordinance that we have in the community is woefully antiquated and causes all sorts of problems for the city. In particular, that persons do not believe that they have to install fences with their pools, which they are required to do. So, the, I believe you see our current ordinance and the Sparta ordinance. Sparta ordinance, Sparta's ordinance is pretty good. I'm sure Mr. Moore can improve upon it. So, me and him will talk about who's going to take this one to the team and bring it back to you guys in a more complete form at your next meeting.
And I think we're probably going to hear a familiar refrain on the next couple items on here. The, the item ten B, the sample industrial building facade requirements.
Yep, so, again, Mr. Moore may have stepped in it. He doesn't know it yet. But the city is currently working on the development of a business park, which we anticipate will have a number of industrial buildings. And we were attempting to redo the industrial facade building requirements, did I read that right, industrial building facade requirements? Prior to Mr. Johnson's departure. It got a little bit more complicated than I think we were expecting, and I said, you know what, sounds like the job for the next player, so. Mr. Moore has been awake, made aware of that. He also sees our current non-residential design requirements. And he has been notified or has been notified at this moment in time that I think we identified a differentiation problem between commercial properties and industrial properties. Where we want to minimize but not remove the requirements for industrial buildings and have them look nice at the same time. So I think this board would state, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the recently installed industrial building at the northeast corner of sixteen and White Creek Avenue was a nice-looking building. And that we'd like to have requirements that kind of would encourage that look in industrial building. And bring it back to you at your next meeting.
And then item C, on, on changing our parking requirements, session on zoning parking requirements ordinance.
Same exact story. So this is one of those things we've been working on for a long time with Mr. Johnson. We never quite pulled the trigger on that one. I believe it's this board's position that strict requirements for parking maybe are a bit antiquated themselves, and that we'd like to move towards either a significantly more flexible ordinance, or perhaps do away with the minimum requirements in total. So we no longer have minimum requirements, but some other standards by which we could have parking for businesses. And I know a guy who might be able to help us with that.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll bring it to the future meeting if that's okay.
Sounds great. So, item eleven, open discussion for issues not on the agenda. Respondents, we have the twenty-twenty-two calendar, which we get every time. Nothing new there, I'm assuming. We have the item two, the Williams Works executed contract. That's just housekeeping. Um, and then item three, under correspondence, is a list of known two-family and multifamily homes in the B two, B three. What's the?
So I would point out just one minor thing, and that is, there is a difference between accessory apartments, which are attached to commercial buildings on Main Street. And multifamily and duplex and single-family homes, which just happen to exist in the B two, B three district. Those homes are freestanding and separate from any commercial use. But this is only those and not accessory apartments.
Okay. Um, so, staff comments? City manager is up first on the agenda for that?
So I will apologize. I know that we're getting into some contentious and rocky waters, rocky waters, that rocky ground.
There were some rocks in there, yeah.
But this has been an ongoing smoldering, lingering issue for the whole five years I've been here. There is no easy solution, as you guys have known and articulated. We are trying the best that we can, but there is no easy solution. I understand that the landlords are generally more savvy and aware of these meetings, and they do get to come in and indicate their thoughts and their desires. But my job is not necessarily to protect the landlord's desires and wants. I am also here representing the desires and wants of the citizens who live in single-family homes in an R one single-family residential district, who may not want a eight-plex in what used to be a single-family home to their immediate next door. So I am trying to weigh all of the needs and wants and legal requirements that we have here in the community. And I do believe there is a solution here, and we're working towards it. I would like to thank the board. You guys articulated and had a much softer tone, which I think was well received than I have. Of course, you guys know I'm and of course, I do so out of love for the community, but I do appreciate all the work and effort you guys put into it.
Thank you. City clerk? Planning commission members, any comments?
You are awesome.
No, I don't think so. I disagree, but I can, can you?
I'd like to thank the city manager for continually guiding us through these complicated matters, and welcome to our community and, and participation, and thank you, Miss, Madam Clerk, for all your hard work.
I think we do, I think the input from this group and Mr. Romack is very helpful. I'm sure Mr. Moore, you'll be, same for us. We definitely could use expert guidance. But, yeah, I think helping fix some of the issues that are, maybe were ignored, is going to help our city just look nice and grow better.
Um, again, welcome again, Mr. Moore, if you haven't welcomed enough times yet. And obviously, I, I I care deeply that we create a, a great place for, a great, a great space for people to live, a great space for people to do business. We have many multiplicity of different views on these issues. But I'm hoping that we can find a way to get to the meat of this and find a way to allow people to continue to have businesses in this town. To continue to rent things in this town, but also that we are meeting certain minimum standards that attracts more people and more business and more growth to this town so that the pot expands. And if we don't keep that in, in, in our sights, and we don't move forward, and we don't actually stand behind the decisions that we make in here, or the decisions that are made by the city council, then I, we're all just wasting our time. So, it's uncomfortable that it is sometimes to actually stand by in these things. It's, it's sometimes a necessary thing. So, thank you for all of you for helping with that tonight. And I will turn it over. Well, we don't have a city council representative here tonight unless Rose would like to jump in.
Our blood drive next week, Tuesday, running low on blood. We didn't have a lot of sign up, so if you know of anybody that wants to give some blood, I know you just did recently, so you're probably not ready. Pass the word. Tuesday at the Cedar Springs Community Library, if you can give blood, go to the versity, V-I-R-S-I-T-I website and sign up. If you can't do it Tuesday, you can still go to the website and pick another place or time, so it's essential that we get some more donors. Thank you.
Um, and I'll put you on the spot, Mr. Moore, this spot for the, uh, planning consultant report.
Mostly Mr. Collins before we let this more talk, uh, he does have a short presentation if you'd like to go.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, it is. So, um, first of all, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we had, uh, Mike and I had talked about just preparing just a brief kind of a educational training sort of thing. Um, just from watching the meeting tonight, it seems like you guys are kind of well-versed and know what you're doing. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. Um, and just, I guess, by way of introductions, um, I am happy to be here. Um, I live not too far from here. You know, it's a, a nice, you know, ten-minute drive maybe from my house. I just live uh, south of M fifty-seven in Cortland Township, so I'm up here a fair amount anyways. And so I'm, I'm really excited to be, uh, you know, kind of working for the community that's close to home. It's rewarding personally and professionally, um, to kind of have that role. So, um, this is kind of a training, uh, you know, show, slideshow that I've put, put together here. I'm not gonna, like I said, I'm not gonna dwell on this a ton. Um, just to kind of walk through some of the basics. So I think you're familiar with both the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act, if you ever, if you're not, and if you want some good reading to put you to sleep. Highly recommend Act thirty-three of two thousand eight or Act one-ten of two thousand and six. Um, you know, however, they are important to have a lot of good, you know, that's kind of what guides this whole process. So why do we hold hearings and how do we schedule the hearings and what's the process for updating a master plan and, you know, what can a ZBA do and on and on and on? It's all specified in here and then implemented to our, um, zoning ordinance. And then in addition to that, obviously, we have the Open Meetings Act, Planning Commission Bylaws, et cetera. So there's kind of a lot of different, um, you know, legal basis and guidelines for what we're doing. Um, in addition to just what we consider to be good planning practice. Um, there's kind of four sort of key parts about effective decision-making that, and that, you know, tonight was obviously a, a, a good example of going through that process, right? So it's information preparation, deliberation and documentation. Um, big decisions aren't easy. Heck, sometimes small decisions aren't easy either because they have often that kind of long-term effect. You have to be careful of, okay, if we decide this tonight, how is it gonna affect something in five years and in ten years? So, so, so this show kind of walks through each of these, um, each of these steps here. So, um, information, initial contact, so um, that comes in through stack you, that you, is, is planning commissions. Um, you know, don't often have a lot of those initial conversations with, with, with applicants. There's a process for that. Um, you know, but sometimes you might get, get flagged down or asked a, a question by an applicant and that's, you know, one of those tricky areas where you can get in, 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 in the trouble, Phil. Ask you something and you're like, yeah, off the top of my head, I think it's this, and maybe you don't give them the right information. So you gotta be really careful with kind of what, what you say and make sure that you know for a fact, if you're gonna give them any information. Then make sure that you just know who you're, uh, contacting and know, know, know who is contacting you and just making sure that you're aware of that. On my site, on your agenda, did you have a section on there for, you know, potential conflict, conflicts of interest? Um, in, in addition to the sort of standard conflict of interest, um, concerns that come up where, you know, someone might have a financial interest. There's also a general, um, you know, air of objectivity that plays into that whole thing. So sometimes, you know, and I've had this happen a couple of times where there was not a direct conflict, but because of some contact with an applicant or with somebody opposed to a project, a planning commissioner said, I don't think I can be objective anymore. And it's really important to, to disclose that, even if it doesn't feel like a direct conflict, you know, you planning commission must be objective, must have an open mind, must weigh the facts when you're making your decisions. Um, procedure is, 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 is super important. So, you know, I kind of think that a lot of us planners are kind of process nerds, so making sure that, that the process is right, that's followed correctly into the tea every time is really important. Um, and obviously, you know, if, if and when you get into an appeal situation or, uh, you know, or, or you're in, in the circuit court or something like that, process is a huge, huge, uh, influencer on, on how that is, is going to turn out. When it comes to being prepared, site visits are important. So you need written permission to enter the site. Sometimes that's right on the application form itself. Um, but you know, learn as much as you can, walk the site if you can. Um, if you can't, that's okay too, but you know, we have a lot of neat tools that are disposal now in twenty twenty-two, like, you know, Google Street View and Google Earth and the county G I, you know, with Regis and Kent County G I S, all that sort of stuff. So, um, you know, learn as much as can about, about the site, natural features, topography, starting land uses, et cetera. You know, our staff report will talk about a lot of these topics too. So we, we are here to, to support you and to advise you and to give you the facts that you need to make good decisions. Um, but it never hurts to, to visit the site for yourself and, you know, kind of see firsthand, there's, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's really hard to get a substitute for that. Um, so, uh, then also take a look at obviously the information that they've submitted. Also look at the master plan and zoning ordinance and those sections of it that apply to that application at hand. So our meeting next month will probably, this will be an important thing to do, right? There's a, it's a pretty decent sized, uh, application coming in. And so it's gonna be really important just to look at what the master plan has, has to say about that table of development, how your zoning ordinance is gonna handle it. Um, I'm familiar with the firm that put that together and they do typically do a pretty good job of, you know, going through the ordinance and um, you know, kind of finding all the provisions and getting it pretty close, but, um, you know, we'll have comments, we'll probably have some suggestions, some edits, things like that. Um, and then obviously, again, you know, objectivity is important. So, um, you know, don't come in here with, with a closed mind saying, nope, I'm not gonna vote for this, you know? Have an open mind, listen to both sides. Um, and it's, it's, it's really tempting sometimes, but let's try to not like do that, the applicant's job for them. So we don't need to design the site. We don't need to reach or redesign the site for them. That's their job. Um, suggestions obviously can be helpful, but, um, you know, we need to be careful to just make sure that you're giving suggestions, noting your concerns and things like that. Uh, when it comes to deliberations, we've got rules for speakers. Uh, that's, you know, those people in the public and rules for decision-making. Um, or for decision-makers, that's you all. So as far as speakers go, and again, this, this will come up when there are a bunch of people in the room and then it's, then maintaining that order is gonna be super important. And you know, Mr. Conley is chairman. That's gonna be, it's tough sometimes, but you know, holding people to that three minutes, making sure that there's a very orderly process will make life easy. Um, I've seen more times than I have, than I, you know, care to, you know, have experienced when someone lets someone go on for that three minutes and fifteen seconds. Just cause, okay, let's just get that last sentence out and then the next person wants to go for three minutes and fifteen seconds. And then they don't let them and then you have this weird conflict and, you know, the meeting can spiral out of control pretty quickly. So, um, making sure that everyone has a, has a, um, chance to speak, limiting comments, et cetera. Is there a question?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify because for three minutes, for four minutes, I wanted to make sure, uh, do we have a policy? Um, and I haven't been stating, and I, I think of it every time after it starts, but I haven't stated what the number of minutes is. And so if I, first, I wanna make sure that there is a policy that, for instance, the city council follows or whatever, that I'm, I'm mirroring that.
So under six public comments, it indicates that citizens wishing to speak are allowed four minutes.
Well, I guess I did say that, never mind.
Of course, we're not super strict about that.
Yeah.
Maybe should be.
No.
We have held a few librarians to that standard.
Yes, yes.
But, you know, there, there's also a difference between the public comment and the, you were the applicant and we were asking questions.
Right. And I'm not, unless I, I'm gonna try to redirect if it's, if it's getting off track, but I, I'm not putting a timeline on an applicant when we're.
Right. Yep. And that's, that's what I'd recommend. And so, um, obviously, you know, when you only have four or five people in the audience, yeah, you know, it's, it's obviously you're not at risk of losing control of, of the meeting. And sometimes it doesn't make sense to hold everyone to this super strict four minutes. And frankly, most of my clients don't do that unless you need to, right? Unless you have a room full of people. And it's really important to make sure that you can get through everyone because the concern there is that, is that you have a couple of people might try to filibuster the meeting. It'll go too long. And then there's a lot of people that have something to say that did not get an opportunity to say it. Um, and then as far as the, uh, as the planning commission, uh, comments go, again, comments through the chair. Um, you know, when, when at all possible, you know, avoid tempting. I'm sure I'm on my planning commission, so I know it's tempting. Um, you know, uh, you know, avoid making speeches, you know, express opinions, obviously, but you know, let's base everything on what's in the zoning ordinance, what's in the master plan. Um, and just being unsure or not having a strong opinion doesn't mean you've got abstain. Um, you know, sometimes it's, it's, it's not a lot of fun, but you gotta make a decision. And, um, you know, again, there's, there's no such thing as, as, you know, taken, you know, asking too many questions or wanting to be too informed. I mean, it's really important for you as planning commissioners to learn as much as you can about these applications. So you can make the best decision for the community. Um, site plans that meet all standards of the zoning ordinance must be approved. Um, I don't get the sense that that's an issue here, but you know, there are some instances where people think that a site plan is a discretionary decision. It's really not. Um, you know, if it meets the standards of, of, of the ordinance, there's only really one decision to make. Um, so it's important to understand kind of what your role is and what your limitations are in that. Now with special land uses, those are more discretionary, like with what we saw tonight. Um, you have more, more discretion there, um, in terms of what you can require, uh, what kind of conditions you can impose and, you know, how you come out on the, on the approval standards. But, um, site plans are often a bit different. Um, so again, we had good practice at this tonight and you guys know the process. So there has to be someone make a motion, someone second as the motion. Make sure you understand, you're stating the request. So just like you did tonight, you know, let's, you know, approve a special land use at thirty-eight, thirty-nine Elm Street or whatever it was and kind of walk through, um, what the action is gonna be, what the conditions are. And then, um, you know, it's, it's preferable to have some sort of, you know, justification for what that decision is. So, you know, because we have found that all the standards are met, which is kind of what you incorporated in, into your motion tonight. It's, it's important to explain why you're making the decision that you're making, especially if it's a no. Um, sometime it's, it, it's pretty easy to say, yeah, this needs to standard or so that we're going to approve it. But um, if you're saying no, sometimes it's because there's a couple of things that, that, that you're not quite comfortable with, right? Well, okay, but this doesn't meet. You know, we don't think it's consistent with the master plan or we don't think that this is, you know, gonna be a safe environment for, you know, pedestrians or whatever it could be. Um, so it's important to kind of identify there are any standards in the ordinance that are not met. And if that's the reason for saying no to a project, then, you know, document that and make sure that it's clear what the reason is for a no. Um, motions need to be clear in the proper form. Um, if you need to prepare additional findings, effects, uh, that's why I am here, uh, and to an extent why, why Mike is here, although I'm assuming he's gonna want me to write these lengthy findings documents. Um, we don't do that for every special land use, but again, when there's, when there's a reasonable chance of, you know, of an appeal or some, you know, further proceedings in court, you know, we will work with your city attorney, make sure that we're kind of have all of our eyes dotted and D's crossed in that respect. Um, those are required for special land use decisions. And as you get our staff reports, um, on applications, you'll kind of see that they read a little bit like findings. And so you can rely on that as findings. So you don't have to try to, you know, invent one out of whole cloth at the meeting, which can be difficult for obvious reasons. Um, then the last section to talk about here is, is documentation. So, um, you know, signing the site plans, keeping copies of minutes and approval letters to the applicants, et cetera. Um, staff reports, notes, applications, site plans, correspondence, making sure that there's affidavits of mailing and publication. So, um, as I know, Mike knows, and I'm sure the clerk knows, we have specific rules for when it has to appear in the paper, what the notice has to say. Their standards for all that stuff, and we have to make sure that's, that it's done correctly and we have to be able to demonstrate that that was done correctly. So in keeping meticulous notes and being well organized is, is really, really important with these kinds of decisions. And, um, you know, that will help you, uh, moving forward. Um, so we have a couple more slides here on, uh, public comments. So, you know, take it all at one time. Um, you know, if you wanna respond, you can, you don't have to. Um, you know, you, you can ask questions of, of people. You can ask for, for, for clarification. You can restate their questions. Um, but you know, keep it on topic as best you can. Sometimes someone else, you start with a comment about, um, you know, uh, an apartment complex and end up talking about, you know, some business up the street that's doing something and then going way off topic. So keeping everyone sort of focused to, to the matter at hand is important. Um, you do not have to answer all those questions. Sometimes the very, very best thing you can say is, thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. We'll take it into consideration and that's it. They might ask questions. They might, you know, they might be rhetorical. They, they might not be. If they're easy, fine, you can answer them if they're not. If they're more just asking your opinion. You know, that'll come later. You know, you don't have to get into a back and forth with people and that's often how, how that can, can devolve if you're not careful. Um, you know, commissioners are representatives of the people, as we say, not, not for the people. A lot of people don't come to meetings to support a project, although sometimes they do. Um, I think you've all heard, heard, heard the term NIMBY before. There's another term that's, I think is kind of, uh, entertaining called, called, called the banana. This, there's people who don't want anything, don't build anything anywhere near anything for any reason, kind of a thing. Um, you'll see both of those, you know, kinds of attitudes and others. Um, and so, um, you know, again, just being clear, um, you know, sticking to the format and the structure of the meeting is, it's gonna be really important. So once public comment is closed, public comment is closed. That public comment is closed and then, you know, three minutes later, someone says, have a question. Well, okay, but we're not gonna deal with that right now. You have to keep, keep, keep moving forward. Um, as planning commissioners, it's important for, uh, for you all to, uh, for everyone to contribute. I have seen over the years, some planning commissioners are really run by like two or three people and it's not really my favorite scenario. Like for everyone has that expertise. Everyone here is smart. Everyone, uh, has different perspectives, different things that they're really good at, different areas of interest. And it's important to hear from everyone. Um, you know, ask questions of each other, ask questions of me, ask questions of Mike. Um, you know, you don't have to agree on everything. You know, not every vote's gotta be five oh, six oh, seven oh. Um, it's, it's some of the best meetings that I've been to have been a four-three or a five-to-two. Um, and that's okay because they, you know, commissioner challenged each other and came to a good decision at the end of the day that served the community better. Um, all of your diligence, all, all of your deliberations, of course, must be open to the public. So, um, it can't be, uh, you know, texting each other, you know, sending emails or whatever that are open, open to the public. So that all has to happen here. So it has to be careful. And of course, you know, your, your philosophies might, might differ. You might have different reasons and different ways of thinking, but ultimately you have to come back to what the standards are in your zoning ordinance when you're making decisions. Um, so you can avoid litigation. Um, you can manage it and try to minimize how often it's gonna happen. You know, I don't know how often you have been as a city or, or planning commission have been sued or have had something appealed in court. If it hasn't happened and I've had clients where it hasn't happened in thirty years, but you know, a couple of years later it does because there's some project that um, is just that, is just the one that, you know, happens to, uh, generate a lot of interest and a lot of controversy. So you can't avoid it. Um, it's, you know, you shouldn't necessarily solely make decisions just to avoid it. Um, but you do need to manage your risk and exposure and, and liability by being consistent with your rules and, 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 and your procedures. Being fair and kind and consistent, avoiding conflicts of interest, keeping your records, following statutory requirements. You know, I mentioned briefly conflicts of interest earlier. So these are some of the obvious ones. So you're the applicant, you're the relative, et cetera. Um, you know, what do you do in those sort of situations? You know, if you're a ZBA, you can call it an alternate, but planning commission doesn't really have that luxury. Um, otherwise you, uh, state the nature of your conflict and then you should be leaving the room entirely. You know, sometimes I've seen planning commissioners just, you know, sit up there and turn off their mic and not say anything, or it comes to the audience. It's best to leave the room completely, not be a part of that conversation at all, not be able to sit in the audience and make faces or nod or smile or whatever, to try to, you know, lean things one way or the other. Um, and then, you know, we as staff will make sure that the minutes reflect, you know, what happened. So again, this is, it's really important to act fairly and ethically in those kinds of situations. Um, so, uh, the last kind of slide here is, is our sort of overview or thoughts on effective planning. So you have a master plan for a reason, stick to it. Um, you know, we really don't like to deviate from the plan. There is some flexibility in there, but you know, you need to, 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 to be consistent with your plan and follow it. Um, you gotta be patient. So, um, sometimes you're making a decision to make something better in ten years, not tomorrow. Um, so sometimes we're all patient people and we wanna see things happen right away to improve our community that we get excited about, but it doesn't always happen that way. Um, and then be, be persistent. So, you know, you don't always get opportunities to take advantage of the plan or to implement the plan. So when that opportunity comes along for that project or that thing that we're working on here is at, at, at a staff level and it's a big opportunity to, to move the community forward, you know, make sure that you take advantage of. to move the community forward, you know, make sure that you take advantage of that opportunity and get it right. Because that's why it all on the commission. That's, you know, why, you know, you're here because you love your community and and you want to make the city a better place. And so take advantage of those opportunities when they come up because it's, that's what happened every day. And so the big steps are really important to get right. And so that's what we're going to help you do. So of course, I am happy to take questions. And I guess as a my last closing thought is I am happy to be here. I'm happy to be working for you. I would said, I'm I'm familiar with the city already, but I'm certainly excited and looking forward to learning more with the community and seeing you here every month for the foreseeable future. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you. If you have any questions for me, I don't have anything else as far as updates go, getting back to the agenda. I think we have a plenty to do over the next few weeks and months. And so we'll be we see and then hearing a lot from me moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the commission? In that case, wait a minute. I never had that earlier. You bang that for me.
Pass it over, man. You're the most.